Amy?
Yes.
Kendra?
Yes.
Eileen?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Present.
Lilly's out. Mark?
Present.
I'm done.
Present. So just note that Lilly Raymond-Ree has a previous commitment that she needs to attend to at this time. So, next item on the agenda, let me just make a note here that the original agenda included an executive session which we did not have, so that was canceled. So we're coming back here to start at seven o'clock. And the next item on the agenda are the high school student advisors, Lakshmi and Evan. Do you want to do introductions?
Well, I just wanted to say, this is my Kate Naggaraj and Evan Fleischer, and I'm very excited to do this and introduce myself.
Okay.
And so I'll listen about the first day of school.
Great, okay. Welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
So I'm Lakshmi. I'm going to say a little bit about myself and what I'm involved in. I'm going to hand it over to Evan. I'm currently part of the cross-country team. It's my fourth year. I run indoor and outdoor track, and I'm in the pride committee. What we do is set up for things like school dances and Think Pink Day, and we fundraise as well. I just joined the yearbook club at the club fair last week. I'm pretty excited about that. I'm also in the executive committee for my grade, and we're planning a car wash to fundraise for things like prom and stuff. And I'm also in National Honor Society, and we're helping out with the back-to-school night on Thursday, just helping parents find their kids' classrooms. And, um...
Hi. My name is Evan Fleischer. I'm a senior at the high school. I've enjoyed starting this year so far. It's going great. The new schedule is a little bit tough to get used to, but I think it's working out so far. I enjoy my classes. I play tennis. I'm a co-captain for our tennis team. And I started the debate club for our high school last year, and I'm working on getting it started again for the second year this year. I'm thinking of joining the yearbook club in UNICEF, and, yeah.
Okay.
So I want to talk a little bit about the freshmen and sports at the high school. There's a few freshmen on the cross-country team. Of course, not as many as we hoped, but that's all right. It's typical. They all seem nervous but excited to be at the high school. A lot of them are involved in sports, and they're trying to get involved in clubs. A bunch of them signed up at the club fair. Again, they're a little bit confused about the schedule, but at least we're all figuring it out together. I think overall they're integrating pretty well from the middle school and transition. And the sports seems like they're off to a great start. At preseason at Victory Field, I saw a lot of kids signed up for soccer, like the highest numbers that I think we've seen in a while. Volleyball, they had their first game last week, and so did field hockey, and they won. And there's a football scrimmage on Saturday, and their first home game is Friday. And the cross-country's first meet is next Tuesday, which I'm very excited about. We've handed it to Evan.
All right. I'm going to talk about the school play that's starting up soon, and a little bit about the clubs. The play this year is Peter and the Star Catcher, and auditions are today and tomorrow. Looks like it's going well so far, and they're going to have a crew meeting somewhat soon to discuss making the sets and costumes and everything. And on the club side of things, it looks like everything's just starting to get started right now, like usual at the beginning of the year, and it looks like it's off to a great start.
Thank you. Questions? Thoughts? I have a couple, too. One's the date for the play, the performance. Is that set?
Yeah. It's on our calendar. I don't have it in front of me.
Okay. It'll be later in the fall. Okay.
I just want to make a comment, that I'm excited to see that you both are up here. I've known you guys for a long time, and I cannot believe you're standing in front of this. This is insane, that you're seniors, so welcome and congratulations.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming. Okay. Next would be the public forum. Anyone who wish to speak in the public forum? Okay, you don't have to keep, you don't have to stay long if you don't want to. It's okay to leave, but whenever you want, you can leave. That's fine. Next would be the introduction of new administrative staff, and I believe also we're going to move personnel up. Do you want to talk about overall hiring at this point?
Sure.
Yeah. So we have, you know, at the beginning of every school year, there's always a significant number of new staff coming in. In some cases, new positions, but in many cases, filling positions that were vacant because other people retired or left. So turn it over to Dr. Galston.
Excellent. So, prior to our introductions of our staff here this evening, it is great and exciting that we have welcomed now, at this point, thirty-three new staff members in the district. And, you know, I've had the opportunity to meet with every single one of them prior to actually starting their positions, and I am just impressed with the depth of experience and knowledge that these individuals are bringing into our school system. And as you just highlighted, this is due to, we had several retirements, we added a few positions, and then just general attrition. But the people that are coming in are just going to make our district that much stronger. And I always ask that question, you know, do you believe in that all students can learn? And they all absolutely believe that, and I think that they're in keeping with our core values across the board. I would like to say, just if people are interested to know, we have a mentoring program here in our school district, so all of our new teachers are paired with a mentor teacher. If they're new to the profession, they get a full mentor, so that person's with them, you know, all throughout the year, thirty-plus hours, usually a lot more than that, just to support them throughout that transition to teaching. And anyone new to Watertown but might have some experience, also get a coach that helps them to acclimate to the Watertown Public Schools. So, we're very proud of that program because we know that in that first year, whether you've been teaching for, this is your first year, or it's your fifth or tenth year, whenever you try something new, it's always an exciting adventure. So we want to make sure that our new teachers are successful. So, once again, we're very proud. And we also have hired many new support staff, instructional assistants, aides, et cetera. And at this point, we are ready to introduce three of our administrators that have been appointed over the course of the summer. And I'm going to actually hand it over to Dr. McGuinness, as the people that are here this evening are part of her team, and I think that she's able to provide you with great information about them.
Great.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Galston. So I'm delighted to introduce to you all three folks tonight who are replacing some terrific people who were our curriculum coordinators who have gone off to different various jobs. And the first one is William Bertoni, and it's William's first day today. He is our new K to twelve P E Health and Wellness Curriculum Coordinator, and he comes to us from Marlboro Public Schools as that same role in Marlboro. And he has teaching experience at both the elementary level and at the high school level, which brings a wealth of knowledge in this new role. He met with some great folks in our community organizations today on his first day as well, talking about data for the community, which we'll get into later. William has a degree, a master's degree in educational leadership from Bridgewater, and he has a bachelor's degree in exercise science and P E from UMass Boston, and we welcome William here with us. Great to have.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm very pleased to have you here with the opportunity and have been five years in this. Thank you.
Super. And then, second, we have with us tonight Rashmi Pimprakar, and she is our K to twelve digital learning and library coordinator, also a wealth of experience. She's just spent a decade as the program director for STEAM, excuse me, in computer science in Boston Public Schools, much larger district than ours, so she's bringing that information to us. She taught mathematics and computer science before. She has two master's degrees, one in electrical engineering and the other one in education, and then a bachelor's degree in engineering in electronics and computer science. So, wealth of information to share. And Rashmi, we're so happy to have you as part of our team.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Finally. And thirdly, we have Suzanne Dunn, who is our new six to twelve English Language Arts Curriculum Coordinator. Suzanne brings a wealth of information, of experience as well. Most recently, she was the K to twelve Humanities Coordinator in Randolph. Before that, she was fifteen years a teacher in both Bitterford, Maine, and in Winthrop, and led a ton of professional development for the district, so we look forward to that expertise as well. Suzanne, degrees, again, B A in elementary ed and an M A in literacy education. So Suzanne, we welcome you as well.
Very much. Everyone's been incredibly welcoming. We're all going to jump right in, but it's been a lot of fun. Thank you.
Great. You're joining a great team of colleagues who support our teachers in the district, and their efforts have shown in the data over the last three years. So, welcome to all of you. We have a fourth curriculum coordinator who is new, and she's our K to eight literacy social studies, but she just had a child, and so I'm going to introduce her to you either November or December meeting, and I'll give you information on her as well.
Okay. Welcome to all of you.
Can I just add one thing?
Yes.
I like to add one thing. Just in case you're interested in any more information about all of our new teachers within our district, you can find out short bios on our website, very, right in the front page, you can find out all their information and a little picture of them, just to welcome them to our district.
Okay. Questions? Any questions? I have one question. So, Dr. Galston, you said that new staff members are paired with a mentor, but then they also mentioned a coach if they're new to Watertown. Is that, can you explain the distinction there?
Sure, absolutely. So, I can explain it, having been through this. You know, when you're a brand-new teacher, you're learning not just the teaching, but you're also learning about the community. So, that full-time mentor really helps you not just with acclimating to Watertown, but also content, I mean, helping you through becoming a teacher, becoming a very successful one. Coaches are there to support people. Say it's your fifth year in teaching, but it's your first year in Watertown. And having been through this experience myself when I was a fifth-year teacher, you know, you really don't know anything until you spend some good quality time in a district in terms of, you know, the culture and, you know, where things are located and how the curriculum is in this particular district, because, you know, every district is different. So, a coach generally spends about half as much time as a full-time mentor would with a teacher, but certainly it's just a great way to have a partner throughout that first year to make sure that everybody's successful.
So, you don't have both?
No. You have one or the other.
You have one or the other.
Yes.
So if you're new to Watertown, you have a coach. If you're...
New to teaching.
New to teaching, you have a mentor.
Yes, exactly. Yep. All teachers in Massachusetts need to go through an induction program for licensure, so you have to have that full mentor when you're in your first years of teaching. But if you already have your license and you're moving through your initial, you've been through an induction program, you don't technically need to have a coach, but I'm here to tell you that everybody needs just a little bit of coaching when they start a new district.
Okay. That's great. Sure.
How do the mentors get chosen and kind of matched up?
Yep. So we have a cadre of mentors that have been trained. So they go through a mentor training that just goes over the basics of how to really orient a new teacher to teaching. And so from that list, we have a specific order, and it's, we try to make, you know, either content-specific matches or grade-level specific matches. And then when that's not possible, because there are not enough people in our list, then we go to building-specific. And then if we can't find somebody within the building, which sometimes happens, then we try to find a job alike in another building. Rarely do we get to that point, but sometimes you might be a, you know, speech and language pathologist, and you might need somebody who's a speech and language pathologist even though they're not in your actual building. So, but we try to get, you know, really content to content, and then we go down through that list.
Great, thanks.
And you have to have taught for four or more years to be a mentor.
And people volunteer for it.
They do. Yep. We put out a posting, and then we get responses for people who are interested in mentoring. Sometimes we have to, if we find somebody that's hired and we don't have a mentor who's a really great match, we might recruit, but generally it's from our list.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thanks. Again, welcome. Welcome. Next item on the agenda is the Teaching and Learning Showcase. So the focus here is going to be on the professional development activities over the summer, and then also with respect to the opening days. So, Dr. Galston, or directly to...
I'm going to pass it to Dr. McGuinness, who heads our professional development efforts. But I'll certainly say before she even starts that I think we had such an amazing summer and opening days, and just very excited about the opportunities we provide our teachers in Watertown. So, take it away.
Great. Thank you. You'll note in the memorandum that is, that each school committee member has in front of you, and it's also in our documents. It's entitled Updates on Summer 2019 Staff Professional Learning. Our theme at the very top is Build Forward, and what that means is, in order to ensure cohesive professional development, it's building on the initiatives that we have started in the last two to three years and just strengthening them with teachers. As always, our dual central foci is academic achievement for students and their social-emotional learning and growth. Last year, we received a lot of feedback from teachers that we request after each professional development opportunity. So we heard and we listened to that feedback and their requests, and the three things that kind of surfaced as themes in that feedback was they wanted more time for planning collaboration school-based within their schools. They wanted to build forward on our present initiatives rather than beginning brand-new ones, and they wanted to have fun along the way. So that, those were the three edicts that we used as we developed this as a professional development team made up of members from across the district. In these notes here on the memorandum, I've divided it into three areas, district-wide, secondary, and elementary, just to give some highlights. There's a lot of professional development happens, but I think you'll get a good sense of the continuing work here. For example, that we had three professional development days at the beginning of school this year, and our keynote speaker was John Saffier on High Expectations Teaching and Leading. We met, he met also with the leadership team afterwards. He received a standing ovation to five-hundred-plus people in the auditorium at Watertown High School as he gave a very interactive and research-based data for us to think about. The other big theme was equity, continuing with our work from the previous years. We have hired consultants from Facing History and Ourselves, which is a highly reputable organization of consultants who are working with us now and throughout this year, including our November fifth upcoming Professional Development Day. The secondary teachers and staff members had two sessions, one, the history of education inequities, and the second one, exploring difference in belonging. So there were two different sessions that they attended. All of our teachers, custodians, instructional assistants, everyone in the district, has received the book Culturally Responsive Teaching and the Brain. And in fact, there's a copy that Ariel has for all of the school committee members down there in gift wrap. And we actually did gift wrap all hundreds of these books, and the reason is twofold. One is, it's always nice to get a gift, and we didn't want to overwhelm the teachers with, here, you're back to school and you've got a lot going on, now read this book. But, so what we did is, we did some presentations and had some dialogue about it, hoping that when they finally open it, it will be served as a gift. And we're going to, throughout the year, across the district, go chapter by chapter and make it a comprehensive study. So, and the other book that we also are using as, on the equity team, is called White Fragility. So it's another book study that we're using for our equity work. On the second page of the memorandum, it lists some more district-wide PD that folks have had. I won't read all of it, but we're continuing the understanding-by-design curriculum development in all areas. So that means a lot of teachers spent the summer in various groups with various departments, building their curriculum and housing that curriculum in the Atlas Management Tool during the summer. As you'll see on that list, district-wide, responsive classroom trainee, training continues and professional development. So we had a four-day institute for our middle school folks, and we had a separate four-day institute this summer for our elementary folks. So we had a total of fifty-seven middle school and elementary school faculty members attend those eight days of training, giving up their summertime, which we much appreciated, and they greatly did as well. We also had our instructional assistants and all of our extended-day staff trained in a one-day training on responsive classroom. If you look under the elementary, we continued, again, building forward from our initiatives on literacy, and in particular, structuring our readers workshop, year two. We sent our elementary math coaches to a four-day training at Leslie College for coaching. We, I don't think, I guess you can read through all of that and certainly ask me questions if you have any more. I'll flip down to the secondary list there as well. Again, more curriculum development for courses and across the grade levels. And then under the chart there with the blue heading, we do a survey every year, of course, to all of the staff. And so, the keynote speaker, John Saffier, this, this chart demonstrates the results on the elementary level and the secondary level to the two prompts that were on the feedback. And the first prompt was, the presentation was helpful for my instructional practice or job function. And the second was, the information I learned will positively impact student performance. So as you can see, elementary versus secondary, there's a strong appreciation or agreement with those statements with teachers, eighty-two percent of elementary teachers scoring a three, four, or five. I put underneath it the four and five, if you wanted that information. And then at the secondary level, ninety percent of the teachers scoring a three to five. And then likewise, at the bottom, for how it's going to impact student performance, it increased in both of those, eighty-eight percent at the elementary level and ninety-one percent at the secondary level. The other big district-wide initiative that we are continuing with is equity. And again, the consultants... And again, the consultants from Facing History and Ourselves, the whole day on Thursday, did some sessions. Same questions or same prompts at the elementary level. 95% of teachers scored it three to five on medium to strongly disagree. And secondary teachers was 75%. And how it positively impacts student performance, again, elementary, 95% three to five, and secondary, 82%. Finally, at the bottom of this document is anecdotes or qualitative evidence from teachers when prompted by the elementary principals, just to give a little bit of feedback on both the school-based PD that happened explicitly at each of the schools. And I'll let you guys read this on your own, but I kind of, I'm going to highlight one or, one or two of them here from the teacher feedback. The second one down says, "I'm honestly having trouble putting into words how much happier I am, but this was the best I could do. Having been here for nine years, this has been the best start to the school year yet. I have known my colleagues for a long time. However, I can't remember the last time I laughed and smiled that much while working with them. Our staff meetings followed by responsive classroom curriculum, and I had so much fun learning new things about existing and new colleagues. The opening activities forced us out of our comfort zone. However, it felt good and safe to take risks. It felt good and safe because Principal Moulton created that environment for us. In a few short days, the walls and common spaces were filled with signs of positive quotes. Simple gestures go a long way. It's so nice to see staff feeling positive, supported, and finding joy again in their work and every day." And the one right below it, I also liked, and then I'll let you guys read them on your own. But, "This was the best PD I've had since starting to work here. I very much valued the time I had working in my classroom because it allowed me to hit the ground running with meaningful and rigorous lessons in the first week. Also, our administration is working hard to promote and cultivate openness and a sense of community amongst our faculty. This shown through in the hard work and planning of our administration and the professional development team. It was genuine and appreciated." So, you can read on, but it was listening to feedback from staff and the professional development team, looking at what the needs are, looking at the data. We continued with all of our initiatives and supporting teachers in a good way and giving them enough time to have that school-based time to develop the culture and feel good starting with kids on the first day. And I welcome any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Presentation. Questions? Thoughts, comments from any member?
Oh, I said one person.
On the list, the elementary and secondary list, that is summer PD, correct?
It's anything from the end of summer till through the August opening days, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I have one comment. So, it's interesting, the, the equity Facing History and Ourselves, the ratings that are on the top of that page, the difference between elementary and secondary. So, it's, it's elementary quite very, very strong. And I, I'm looking particularly at the fours and fives, because three is kind of a neutral category, right? It's like you're neutral about it, basically. Whereas, four and five are on the positive side. And the elementary is so much stronger than the secondary. And that wasn't so true on the keynote. That was fairly relatively close. So, I don't know whether you have any, any thoughts to that? Is, is secondary teachers just have a different perspective on this, or I don't know?
Yeah, well, I could, I think there certainly is a different lens that folks use based on level that they're, that they're teaching. But I think what also accounts for it is, there were two different sessions, one at Hosmer Auditorium and one at the High School Auditorium. So, the elementary folks were all at Hosmer, including our instructional assistants. And then, all of the middle-school and high-school folks were at the high school for the, so they had two presenters from Facing History at both of those. And then, the high school went on and had the two separate sessions, which the elementary school will have on November 5th. So, they had more of it at the high school, so that might be one...
Interesting.
And, and one other thing that we had discussed earlier when looking at the data is that this is, you know, really the third year, when all is said and done, at the secondary level that we've been working on the equity. You know, the RISE project was, was secondary only. So, I think some of the comments that were in the feedback was, you know, you're preaching to the choir, we've done this. Not exactly, and not in the exact same way, but certainly, it's, you know, it's something that we've already introduced at the secondary level. So, I don't think it's going to be as dramatic of an impact as it would be at the elementary, because that's, this is their year to fold in. You know, that being said, it's interesting, when I read some of the comments, I, I can't help but say that, you know, last year was kind of that interim year where we went from RISE to, you know, choosing Facing History and Ourselves as the provider. And I know that, that some people are, you know, feeling, I guess, this is what I do, and this is really, you know, part of my practice anyways. It's not 100%, it's 50%. So, I think that there's still, you know, plenty of people that, you know, we're bringing along and moving forward with the equity work.
And also, John, I would also caution you to maybe look at, the, the reason I use the three to five is because if agree is in the middle, strongly agree is to the right, and strongly disagree is to the left, I view three, four, and five as wins. So, wins as positive. So, that's why I did present both to you, the four and five, which are even stronger. But, and you know what also is, when you look at the data and you see a three and a three, for example, and then you see their notes, or you see a four and a four, and you see their notes, it kind of gives you that qualifying information to what the three means, which means, yeah, good, blah, 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 you know? So, that's why I kind of use, I thought, okay, that makes more sense to me to do three to five. Yeah, Kendra?
Some of the, the quotes talk about more building time, a little more collaborative time, team time. How has that changed from last year to this year?
Yeah, good question.
Because a bunch of them note that.
Yep, we had, we had more professional development on the initiatives because we had iReady just starting last year, if you recall. So, there was a lot of heavy, intense, at 105 degrees with no air conditioning last year. So, that was, no, I mean, not, but that was a hard, hard thing to undertake. So, this year, and they're, they wanted more time to work, and they did, to collaborate at the schools and to build the culture, to start all the responsive classroom. So, that's what they're writing about here. So, we made sure that we had a day of that for elementary and secondary. Yeah, sure.
Can I, can I share something?
Sure.
Just on the, on the equity theme, and this is not really related to this, but I thought I would share this anyways. We received on Friday a notification from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that the Watertown Public Schools has been identified for their best practices in leading a holistic approach to equity district-wide. According to the department recommendation, academic data and state accountability indicators, our district has evidence that our best practices are producing successful results. So, we've been invited to be part of a dissemination fair in November to share our best practices. And I don't, I mean, I just got this email, so I haven't really followed through to find out what are the indicators they're looking at. But it's enough to catch the attention of the department, which I think is pretty impressive in terms of our equity work.
That's great, that's great, good work.
Can you, what is that again? Can you just add just a little bit?
What was the context, did you apply for something?
Nope, no.
Nope.
That's why it's even better.
Yes.
So, what did they say?
That they have, we have been identified for our best practices in leading a holistic approach to equity district-wide. So, I think they're looking at, you know, various indicators, not just achievement, for example, to see about how it is that we're promoting equity. And, you know, they use, they look at all the data that we supply to the state. And, you know, I'm sure that there's some information that's being fed as well. As you remember, I'm part of that ERS, the Educational Resource Strategy Group that's doing a look at our equity work as well. So, I have a feeling it's not just data that they're getting, but information about what we're doing as a district.
So, they use, but they use the data we have plus other...
Yes, yep, yep. I'm, I got that, I was like, wow, that's very exciting, so.
And one more thing to add to that. When we review our grant funding from the state, we have to look at some data that shows our teachers' preparation and education and if there's a difference between various courses. And when we see there's a difference between, there's a, there's an algorithm that they use, we have to address how we're going to hire differently, how we're going to ensure that all of our classes have equitable access to qualified teachers, et cetera. So, in the last two years, we've had to do that. And so, we send that information, and then the results show, oh, look, there's improvement in that area. So, I'm guessing that's part of this data that they're using for that as well.
Okay, great, that's good news, thank you. Any other questions or comments on the professional development? Yes.
I just want to make a quick comment that this is, it's just such an impressive list of opportunities that staff participated in on their own time over the summertime and that the district was able to provide. And so, I'm just, I'm just so impressed by the amount of work and what educators got to do in Watertown in the last few months. So, thank you, guys.
Great.
And the teachers.
Okay, all right, thank you. Next item, we move to action items. So, the first action item is the superintendent's goals for 2019-20. So, these were on our agenda at our last meeting in a draft form. So, the superintendent presented those. And again, just by way of general background, every year at this point in time, we ask the superintendent to work with the superintendent to come up with goals for the coming academic year. And that's the document we have in front of us. Dr. Wellston?
Excellent, oh, thank you, that's right, I have the clicker. So, so, thank you very much. I'm very excited to be heading into my third year of goal-setting with the school committee. And I'm very pleased to be in the midpoint of our district improvement strategy as well. So, I think everything is coming together and mutually supportive in terms of my goals as well as the goals that we have for our district. So, as always, I always like to ground our discussion around our mission, which is to prepare all students for life by engaging them in a challenging and meaningful education within an inclusive, diverse community. We inspire excellence for all, and our core values, as we hold so dear, are equity, excellence, and community. As I said, when I presented the draft to you, that honestly, many of these goals are carryovers from last year. But what changes are the action steps within this year that show that every year, we're continually trying to get better at what it is that we're doing. But there are some core key practices that, you know, I, I hold central to my goals, either because I'm not yet there yet, meaning we didn't fully accomplish them last year, or it's time to move on to a different area to focus on. So, this is one example of that. Goal one is fair and effective educator goal-setting and evaluation. So, at this point, last year, I focused a lot on the educator goal-setting, making sure that our educators all had SMART goals within their educator plans, which we did very well with last year. So, this year, really, the focus is making sure that we're in our classrooms and providing pertinent feedback to our teachers. So, the shift in this goal will be 100% of teachers being observed at least four times in their educator plan cycles, and that at least three times a year, the leadership team will calibrate feedback that is provided to teachers. So, that's the subtle shift in this one from my goal from last year. So, one other thing that's different in this one, you'll see that, again, this is reflected in the actions, the key actions, the fact that we're going to be focused on feedback to teachers at least four times in the cycle. But additionally, one, one thing that I'm adding this year is trying to visit the schools with the coordinators. Last year, it was really a focus on the principals. But I think it's important to work with the coordinators as well. They are in Teresa's department when all is said and done. But when, together as a, as a team, we're trying to provide calibrated feedback for teachers. So, that is one step that I'm going to be taking this year as well. And continuing our learning walks. So, did you want to stop after each goal, or do you want to just go?
Do people have questions per goal, if they want to do that? Any comments? Okay.
Okay, so, goal two is effective communication with the larger school community. So, this is increasing opportunities for students, teachers, families, and community members to provide feedback and to contribute to decision-making. So, you know, I think that, you know, even over the weekend, I, I got an email about how it is that we provide feedback and information to families. And so, no matter what we're doing, you know, we can always grow. So, I, I think this is one of those goals that, just as a continuation from last year. But this year, one of the key differences is the fact that together, we, which you're going to talk about in a little bit, providing an annual report to the school community that, or the entire community, not just the school community, about those things that we hold to be very proud of in terms of what we did last year. So, that's one additional layer that we're adding in this time. But certainly, trying to work really hard on two-way communication, finding ways to gather feedback from our parent community is a shift this year in my goal. And one of the ways that we're going to do that is looking at a culture and climate survey that we administer biannually, that we can use, you know, as long as we can, so that we get some continuous data to find out how our families are perceiving our schools and the impact that we're having on their, their children. So, that's one difference as well. Questions on that one?
I have a question.
Yes.
What, what, community members for the, for the survey? I'm not sure we...
Yep, so I think that it's important not just to get feedback from parents and teachers and students. There is a layer there of community members. They might not get the actual full survey, because they're not going to have the same information. But I think about, like, when I started as my entry plan, you know, I had a survey that went out to anyone who, just four simple questions. I think you can get feedback from community members. It's not as in detail as, like, the Panorama survey.
Okay, I'm thinking of, like, as a, just a community member, how would I answer some of those questions?
No, 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 no. But I think it's, it's vitally important to hear what the community feels about what we're doing in the schools.
Absolutely, okay.
So, we'll figure out a way to do that that isn't a full-blown 50-question survey.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions on number two? Okay.
So, goal three is building for the future at the elementary and the high schools. So, this is, again, a continuation, but every, for the, this will probably be a goal for the next five years, if all is said and done. So, you know, I think the big difference here is, you know, we're stepping into the realm of actual thinking about construction. So, I think that for, for me as a superintendent, the key is going to be, how is it that we provide pertinent information to the, and you put up a good point the other day about, you know, making sure that there's even segmented, you know, this is going to impact the butters, this is going to impact people that live around the area, this is going to impact families, this is what's going to happen to teachers, this is what's going to happen to kids. Like, everybody has a piece of this, but if it's too general, you know, you're seeking out information, you only want to know what's going to impact you. So, I thought that was a great tidbit and hint moving forward. But this is, I think, the key for me, is how it is that we communicate effectively as we enter into construction, because now it's, it's real. So, and more, you know, the other important piece of that is moving into feasibility for the high school. Now, you know, we are so fortunate to be able to move forward with our elementary projects without, there's still a typo up there, I apologize for that, but without having to do a dead-exclusion vote, but for the high school, we will. So, I think that now, more than ever, communication is essential so that the larger community is aware of what it is that we're trying to do. It's, every day, you know, I meet people who live in Watertown, and they, they don't even know yet that we're building elementary schools. I don't, it's not anyone's fault, because it's just not part of their lives. But it's got to change, because sooner or later, we're going to have to vote on that. So, any questions about goal three?
Okay.
Okay, goal four is systems and structures that ensure equity. So, I think we actually just heard a lot about the action steps, the key actions for equity in terms of really working on creating that equity leadership team, which we have, working with our equity partner to make sure that we're providing information to our staff, really working towards that shared understanding of what equity is. And then, looking at instruct, sorry, institutional structures and systems to determine if they're perpetuating bias. So, this is that work that we're doing with ERS. And the book study, which you're all getting a copy of. And then, working with the ABC, the Anti-Bias Coalition, which is actually meeting on Wednesday night, always an open invitation to everybody. But, so that's the steps that we have in terms of working on equity.
Any questions or comments? Okay, thanks.
Okay. I switched up the ordering of these from the feedback that I got last meeting. So, goal five is increased student achievement for all students in the Watertown Public Schools. So, this is the goal around ensuring that the curriculum is articulated and aligned to the standards pre-K to 12, and that we're providing our teachers with the necessary resources to support successfully, sorry, to successfully deliver the curriculum. This is actually a goal that is shared. I mean, all these goals are shared with, with myself and my leadership team and the teachers and everybody. But specifically, this is really around teaching and learning. But it's ensuring that we're moving forward with that multi-year curriculum alignment, revision and development plan, that we start that K to 12 math program curriculum review, keeping with our instructional leadership teams, moving forward with that at the elementary level, providing that coaching and support, and then really working through that middle-school turnaround plan. So, those are kind of the focus, focus areas for goal five. I think it's important to make this clear and articulated, because this is how it is that we are going to prepare all of our students for life. So, that's goal five.
Okay, questions or comments? Okay.
Yes, yes.
I have a question.
Yep.
Just generally, and the, are there, like, benchmarks connected to each of these?
There are, they're not, they're in the actual documents.
You didn't put them up there, but they're...
Okay, I figured they were, but I just didn't know.
Yes.
Thank you.
I didn't put the benchmarks on there.
That's fine.
Okay. So this is the one that, you know, I got the feedback around. It was, you know, narrowing the achievement gap for all students. I don't, I'm not, now I can't remember exactly how it was worded, but I thought, given the fact that we're really focused on tiered systems to support, that's what this goal is all about. So developing the appropriate, oh, boy, sorry, my eyes. Develop the appropriate systems and structures to strengthen Watertown's multi-tiered system of support for both academic and social-emotional learning, so that all students are appropriately challenged and experience continuous growth. So I changed this up a little bit. In order to meet the DESI accountability target set for our 25% lowest-performing students. So I shifted the focus more on terms of growth as opposed to achievement, because that is something that I think, no matter how you look at it, we want our students to be growing, whether they're high achievers or low achievers, as long as they're moving forward and growing, that is essential for all of our students. So, and we have that new metric that really looks at the 25% of lowest-performing students. So instead of thinking about subgroups, I think the shift is more, you know, no matter who you are, if you're in that lowest-performing student group, that we need to work with you to ensure that you are moving forward and, you know, continually growing. So that's the shift that I made on that one.
Question. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think in the state accountability system, they will be reporting this 25% lowest performing as well?
Yep.
But in addition to the subgroups, I think they're going to do both?
Yes, they do both.
The traditional...
On the accountability system, it's really just the lowest 25%, and then the aggregate on the accountability system. On the actual MCAS results, they break it down by subgroups. So, like, when you think about, you know, like, the turnaround, that was based on subgroups, but the actual accountability levels are based on the 25% of the lowest-performing students.
Okay.
Some of them are in subgroups, and some of them are not.
Right, okay.
Yep.
So this, just, it feels to me like it's focused on the lowest 25%, but it, the multi-tiered systems of support are not just for those students who are struggling, I assume. I think that's set, as far as I understand it, set up in a way that if you need challenge, that's, that is a system of support that you're getting.
Yes, all students get, or all students will receive what they need. In essence, is the way that that's framed. But I think that when you look at tiered systems of support, you're looking at, well, I don't want to go too far into this, because we're here at this meeting, but core instructional, the core instructional program, you're meeting, you're trying to meet the needs of 80% of your kids, so it's not the 25% lowest. So you're trying to make sure that your interventions and supports that you have in that core instruction meet the needs of all students. And then you start moving into tier two and tier three, which are, you know, more targeted interventions for kids. So.
I mean, it just feels, student learning is about all students?
Yep.
It feels to me that this is too targeted when we say.
So...
The goal is to meet the accountability targets set for the 25% lowest performing.
Right, so I think if you look at goal five, which is really focused on student learning, and that goal, sorry, I can go back. You know, that goal is really the, you know, increased student achievement, it should be changed, sorry, increased student growth and achievement for all students in the Watertown Public Schools. I did shift that, I'm sorry, that slide doesn't reflect that. Because that's, that's for all students, and that's where we focused more on, how are we going to, you know, work with the students who, you know, are, need to be challenged or need to be enriched? Not just the lowest 25%, but, you know, I mean, I hear your point about, in a tiered system, you're meeting the needs of all students, that is correct. But oftentimes, you're really focused on the ones that are not making it in that core tier-one instruction. But we had a deep discussion in our, with our principals around, where do we want to focus? And we want to focus on growth. So, you know, if I'm in a class that, you know, has high achievement but low growth, you have to examine, well, why do we have low growth, even though we have high achievement? Because your sweet spot is high achievement and high growth, or I would say, you know, lower achievement and high growth. To me, that's a sweet spot, because that means that those kids are going to start moving in the trajectory you want them to. But you don't want high growth and, I mean, sorry, high achievement and low growth. I mean, that's, that's not, that doesn't, that's not showing that you're pushing everyone, you know, moving forward. So that's, that's going to be a focus for us as a district moving forward, and looking at that growth. IREDDY is great for that, because we get that right from the beginning of the year, what the growth targets are. And then MCAS provides us information at the end of the year as to how we did, so.
Is this the goal, that going back to last year's goal, that, oh, sorry. Going back to last year, this was about the achievement gap?
It was. Goal six was about the achievement gap last year.
That makes more sense now.
Yes.
Okay.
I switched them up.
Yes, no, well, just the transition from an achievement gap goal to this makes sense to me. I just wanted to make sure that, they will say student learning now, so that's why I was confused.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
They're both student learning, just...
No, I know. I know they are.
I know, I know, I know, I got you. Okay. And then goal seven is the shared vision for district improvement. Again, this is one of those goals that will, I would imagine, always be on my goals, because this is, you know, it's not enough just to have a district improvement strategy. It's something that we all have to commit to, and it's, you know, something that is central to everything that I do. So the key change in this goes back to the other one that we referred to in terms of having the annual reports. I think that's an important way to share with the community how it is that we're doing on our district improvement strategy. So that's, those are my goals.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the goals?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion, comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nice to have it. Thank you very much.
May I inquire as to whether you want me to discuss the district improvement strategy now? Or are you going to wait until later?
No, why don't you go ahead, that's right, go ahead and do it. We're not voting on that.
Nope, you're not, no.
Okay, let's, so let's, on the agenda, if we could, which matches with the goals, the district improvement strategy, which is nine B, move that up to discussion right now.
You know, it, it doesn't, what I'm going to say is, this doesn't look very different from that which I provided to you two years ago, and that which I provided to you last year. And, you know, that's because of the fact that the district improvement strategy is a four-year plan. After this first four years, we'll hopefully end up in a three-year cycle, but for right now, it's a four-year plan. And in essence, the only difference in this is in the first strategic objective. We got a little bit more focused about our tiered systems to support, and really focusing on literacy, RTI in grades K to five, and exploring RTI at the middle school level, and then really focused on the responsive classroom implementation at the elementary and the middle school level. So those are kind of the two changes and shifts that I have in that one, or that we determined. And then in the second strategic objective around excellence, we reduced this from four to three, because we felt that the former initiative one actually is being accomplished in initiative one for the first strategic, that's kind of confusing. I'm just letting you know that we did remove one, because it was redundant. And then the third goal around community is, is the same as it was last year. And then last but not least, the building for the future has definitely shifted into this new phase that we're heading into, which is construction design, as well as the feasibility study for the high school. Now, what I would say is that, sorry, behind each of these are, you know, well-developed action plans as to how we're going to actually do this, which change year to year. But I did want to highlight the fact that we are shifting a little bit on the initiatives, but staying the course overall with our district improvement strategy. And I think you'll see that it's pretty much aligned with my own goals. And I think that we are well on track to, you know, maybe not necessarily achieving every single one of them as written, but certainly making great progress in the next couple of years.
Okay. Any questions? This isn't an action item, but any questions or comments? Yes, Lindsay.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to say that it's so nice to see the strategy in year two playing out in a way that so many educators understand and value. You could tell that from the PD choices that were made, and who participated in, in the comments they had about those first opening days, but also the goals. And it, there's, it's really nice to see so much continuity throughout the whole school community, all on board with this plan and direction that the schools are going. It's very exciting.
Anything else? Okay. I apologize, Lori, I was going to move you up as well, because I know you had a time constraint. You okay?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll get to it pretty soon here. What's that? Well, she didn't, she's enjoying herself, I think, she's...
Not. She's not...
Okay, all right, we'll be there in a minute. All right, let's keep going here. Next, next are the school committee goals. And we have a document here that, thanks to Kendra, put together, kind of standardized the goals, which we talked about at our last meeting. And I think she tweaked them a little bit, I don't know if you want to make any comments on it?
Well, if anything is, if anything on there doesn't, doesn't reflect the conversation we had at the last meeting, we can make those changes. I just tried to clean it up and put it in the format that the superintendent's goals were in, just to have some...
Those kind of actions and benchmarks?
Yep.
Right. So goal number one is about increasing presence in the five school communities. And this is the kind of liaison idea, and similar to what we talked about before.
I didn't, I didn't assign the liaison, since I know Eileen is retiring, and there's some change, so we can work that out, but I didn't want to put that on there at this point.
Why don't we go through, approve them one by one? Any other questions or comments on the first goal? So we'll work, we'll have a communication about who's going to do which one. Makes sense. Okay, is there a motion to approve goal one?
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nice to have it, thank you. So goal number two is about a annual plan, which superintendent actually referred to. So that's kind of some, that's a goal we share with the superintendent, working an annual report that, not a plan, I'm sorry, annual report, that we would do this fall would be the first one. So we'll sit down, there's kind of a tentative draft report of contents. Any questions? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any other questions or comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nice to have it, thank you. Goal number three is the media one, about producing some publication, document publications. Each school committee member taking on some responsibility. I think that's one, Lily's not here, Lily worked on that one. I think my, from my perspective, it's one that probably needs to, you know, it's a kind of implementation, need to kind of think about how that's going to play out, and kind of, there's really a schedule that needs to happen there in some fashion. So I think that, but we'll work with, Lily can take a lead on that. I'll volunteer her, because she's not here.
It happens.
So is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Question, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nice to have it. And then the last one is about the idea of having, featuring the schools, each school, each of the five schools at a different school committee meeting. And this, this, the wording, this is fine, if we want to do it this way, where the wording is that it could be in the school building or in town hall, and focused on the school.
We hadn't made a decision whether we wanted to just focus five meetings on this, on. That was how it was worded.
Okay.
But I'm happy to change it if folks wanted to say in, in the school buildings. We did talk about the second one each month being in the school building, just didn't make it fine.
Five, five months in which there are two meetings, and so the, I think the ideal thing would be to have that second meeting in the school. And it wouldn't be, again, it wouldn't be exclusively about the school, there would be other business items, et cetera, but there would be, you know, a feature on the school. And I think the schools can handle it. I do, I did find out on the cable side that they can't broadcast live. Ariel checked on this one. At the elementaries, they can't, at the middle school, they could, if we do, use the auditorium. We have to decide if we want to use the auditorium. They can broadcast live from there. The elementaries, they can't. And they're, but they can tape it, and so it would be shown later. The one thing they can't do is they can't show, like, graphics, I think. That doesn't work so well, but so I think those are manageable.
Why don't we leave the wording like this, and then we can make a decision if, you know, kind of weigh out whether it's more important to have it live, or we'd rather be in the school?
Yeah.
To give us a little flexibility.
Okay, but I think we're going to have to make a decision by October, because the first one will be in October. I mean, personally, I would, I think it'd be great to try it out in the buildings. And if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. But I, you know, I'm not, the live versus not live is, I don't think, a major issue in my mind. I think it'd just be great to try it out and, you know, go out to the buildings and see what happens.
Great.
But, anyway, so a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Mark?
Go ahead, go ahead, Lindsay.
I was just going to say, I, I think it's an important part of this is to actually have people responsible for making sure we sort of are advertising that this is happening. You know, like, perhaps it's the, that building's liaison that reaches out to the principal and the PTO and kind of try to help get the word out that we will be there, you know, at that school, because otherwise, it's, it may not be a useful effort to relocate.
Well, I would guess, I mean, I'm really deferring to the superintendent on the order...
We're going to do that tomorrow.
Of the five, of who goes first.
Right.
But I'm thinking the principals will take this as a responsibility to kind of get the word out.
Right, I think that we should help with that, you know, kind of...
With the PTOs and site councils, yeah, yeah. And the other thing I can do, you know, the kind of meeting update that I do after these, I will certainly put that in there, and so that kind of goes out to everybody as well, those, you know, those people are going to read it. Mark, you had a question or comment?
I'll wait till we approve this, and then make a comment.
Okay, all right. So wait, motion and seconded, call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nice to have it.
I, I hate to add to this, but the goal for me, and I think the school committee needs to take the lead, and it's not a goal here, but I think it should be the number-one goal, is to form a committee to inform the community about the needs of an override for the high school. We have not done anything formally, and I think we're falling behind, and I'm just, because it is a goal. And, and we do have to do this quick, sooner, rather than later, as we move along in the process. It's not in one of these goals, and these are all optimistic, and I firmly think that, you know, going out to the schools and having participation. But the major goal is informing the community that we need an override. The manager has said on more than one occasion that we can't pay for this without it. So we have not, as a committee, taken action, a formal action to form a committee as we did back in 1995, to promote this. So I think that should be an additional goal, or, I don't know how you want to phrase it, but I think that's as important, if not more important, than some of these things that we're working on here. And I just wanted to make that statement, because we're falling behind.
Absolutely, absolutely. I don't know if Kendra wants to speak to this, but I mean, Kendra and I have had some kind of offline conversations a little bit, but, but we need to bring it more forward.
John, we need to bring this very public at this point.
Yep.
It's, it's critical if we, as a school committee, are going to get a high school.
Yep.
It's critical, we can't have offline conversations anymore.
Well, I think the question was, was kind of building to when it needs to be, you know, much more public, and you're right, and we need to start building up...
We haven't even started, that's, and we're going in for, we're going in next Tuesday to pick an architect.
Right, right.
We've had, we have had some conversations about this, and starting to build the infrastructure for this. But I absolutely agree that have, forming the actual committee and doing the OCPF paperwork, we can, that is very important. We've, we've done some background research, Amy as well, already, on some of what other communities have done, and the timelines that they've recommended, so, so yes, and I do think...
Communities that have had successful overrides have begun very early in the process. We can't marginalize thinking that the money's going to come just out of the trees. We have to, we can't, we, I'm, I'm saying how critical it is tonight, because we're setting goals. And I think this is one of the most important goals that we, as a school committee, and we, as a community, need to now bring into the public view, and have the public discuss it with us.
So why don't we add a fifth goal of that, and then we can start working on it?
Well, we, we can, we can do that, and add a formal fifth goal if we want. I mean, what I would, whether we do that or not, I, I'll, we'll put on the agenda for the next meeting a discussion item on that, and I would ask Kendra and Amy, that have been doing some work on this, kind of present where they're at, what they've been doing, and we'll kind of move forward from there in terms of formal action. I'm not sure we would have an action item, per se, but, but we might, depending on kind of where things are at.
I don't think it's necessary to have an action item, but we have to start involving the citizens of this community, the taxpayers of this community, into the conversation.
Right, right. But that's why we need to have it as an agenda item, so it's on the agenda, people see it, and we have a discussion about it. Okay? All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Did you want to make a formal fifth, fifth motion, or do you feel it's...
I think you got the, I think you got my point.
Yeah, yeah, we got the point, I got the point, that's right, no, I understand it.
I live in Queens, sure.
Yeah, no, we got it.
And the reason I'm saying it is, again, I had another conversation with the manager, who insisted, we don't have the money to pay for this.
Well, we know that. We know that.
I get reminded of this weekly.
Okay, okay. All right. All right, thank you, anyway. So we'll, we'll move forward and, and, you know, on, on that particular issue, we'll put an agenda item for the next meeting and have some discussion, some more formal discussion, and some background a little bit on kind of where things are at and what are kind of the options moving forward.
I think it would be helpful if we could gather some information on what was done the first time we did this.
Yep.
I know it's been a long time, but.
I've got my folder, I still have it.
I do too, but.
Okay. Okay. All right, sounds good. Next item.
I would make a motion that you move up to report A to this point.
Oh, okay.
So Lori doesn't have to sit here any longer than she has to.
You don't want to listen to the approval of gifts?
Or the surplus invite.
The surplus.
Whenever you would like.
Well, no, we, hey, that's fine, let's do it, let's do it. The summer capital project, so that's is the report, item nine A on the agenda. So Lori Cable, who's the director of public buildings, is gonna report on kind of summer activities in the schools, which is oftentimes the period in which they can get the most done.
Yes.
Depending on the availability of spaces. So Lori, thank you, thanks for all your work in this buildings.
So, thank you. I did just want to go through some of the highlights that we did this summer, because I'm, I'm very proud of the amount of work that we actually did in a small amount of time with a, a large amount of, of students. So this first slide really gives a timeline. I mean, when we talk about summer, summer work, we're really talking about two months, that says green, that green bar down there, but this really is a year-long kind of planning, planning project that we have to do. Like, right now, I'm starting to plan for the FY 21 capital project. Some of those projects aren't even gonna be done until the summer of '22. So some of these projects are planned two years out, so it is a very long process that we crunch in, in, in two, two months' time. With that being said, this summer alone, and these are numbers that I, I started looking at as of June 15th, we processed 800 work orders, although we completed 225, 800 of them went through our department in some way or another. Now, they're not all equal, but that is still a very large number of work orders. We started our preventative maintenance work on our boilers to make sure that we've got heat when, when that happens. We did tons of inspections, our fire alarm inspections, our sprinkler inspections, we added lots of, lots of whiteboards, we moved whiteboards, we moved whiteboards again, so a, a lot of that happened. And in doing that, we also cleaned. We have about 574,000 square feet in our, in our building, that is stuff that is getting cleaned, waxed, wiped down. That's a lot of square footage in a, in a, in a very small, small time. Then you add, sometimes principals move classes around, so principals want to say, hey, we're gonna take our resource classroom, we're gonna move it from one room over to another room. Sometimes that's not a lot of work, sometimes that is a tremendous amount of work. In the lull alone they won, we moved 18 different classrooms. That is all, that is a, a lot of work, furniture going in and out, and books moving from one room to another room. Keep in mind that all this was done, we had six school-sponsored summer school programs, we had camp aquas, we had four additional other camps. All this is happening while we were doing this work. So I just wanted to give you a snapshot of, everyone says you've got two months of time to, to get this all done, but this is a lot of work that gets done with a lot of people in our, in our buildings. So I want to go through really some before and after pictures for you, because I think this is really what tells, tells, tells the story. So this is, this is Hosmer. You can see there the before and after. If you look at that wall, that is the exact same wall. So the walls were dirty, they had tape all over them, we went through and we cleaned it out, and we, we painted the hallways. There is a dramatic difference. A little bit of paint does a lot of work, it really cleaned this up. We looked at, we took away the ramp that is in the Hosmer gym, so now this gym can be utilized for whatever we need it to be utilized for in the future. Starting with that basketball hoop there could not be used, now we can use that basketball hoop. We then, we enclosed the door too, to make sure that no one walks out, and so we made sure that it was safe. We helped out with some parking issues, although this is small, and we did have DPW help us out with some of these stripings, but if you look over there on the right side, there wasn't some stripe in there. Sometimes it would confuse, people in small vehicles would think that that was a small parking spot. So when the bus pulled up, if there was a car parked there, people could not get out of that bus. So we just kind of made it a little bit clearer. Something small, but it makes a huge difference. We added some striping on our exterior stairs at the lull to help with some of our visually impaired students. We painted classrooms, we had a couple of summer hires, some high school students came, and a lot of their work that they did this summer was, was painting rooms, again, to give that refreshed look at the, at the lull was, was just a few of the rooms that they did. This is really our huge, huge, probably most dramatic change throughout the summer. We took that basement down in the middle school and we, we put new floors down, we painted every surface in that area. There used to be kind of a green, Kendra, like your scarf pretty much throughout that school, everything that was green is now red. We, we created, we painted the, the small gym area, paint was coming off, you can kind of see a picture of that. It's very dramatic, dramatic change. I think it looks, it looks really, it looks really good. We did flooring, if you remember, last year, we did the hallway flooring, we took that wood laminate that was kind of moving and shifting a little bit, and we started moving towards the classrooms, because we got a little bit of a late start for this due to the procurement process. We were only able to do seven of those rooms, and we'll be doing five more over Christmas break, or at least that is the plan.
That, those, those hallways, flooring, is it gone now?
Hallway is all gone, yep. We did a, a boys and a girls bathroom in the middle school. One of the reasons why we wanted to do this is really the fixtures were starting to fall off the walls, they were, they were starting to corrode. But while we decided to take the fixtures off, we decided to add some paint, add a little bit of pop of color, and so I think these turned out also very well. Girls locker room, girls locker room unfortunately is still going on, but hopefully by the end of this month it will be done. We added doors to the stalls, there used to be curtains there, as, you know, you know that curtains don't stay shut. We revamped the bathroom, very proud of how that bathroom looks, there used to be only one stall in there, the door was falling off, the toilet was falling away from the wall, we now have two stalls in there, one for handicap access. So this project is, is almost, almost done. We did some stair work in the, in the middle school also. You can see that although it was safe, it was really starting to, the rubber was starting to come off, so we're starting to care for that a little bit more, this is just one example of that. We added fountains, we were really trying to go away from just the regular fountains and making sure that all of our fountains have bottom fillers, because that is important for, for not only morale, but for the health of our students and staff. We did seven classrooms in the high school, we redid the floors that were crumbling and, and cracking. We painted all of the classrooms on the third floor of the high school. If you recall, la, excuse me, last summer, we did some patching work due to some asbestos in the walls, and everything is safe, but we didn't like the way it looked. So again, a little bit of paint may, goes a long way to, to help liven up the classrooms. We did carpeting, that picture's a little bit hard, but carpeting was starting to bubble a little bit in the guidance office, so brand-new carpeting, and then while we were there, we had the summer hires paint, paint that area, so they got a whole new refresh. We added AC window units on the third floor of the high school, so this was a, another big project that we did, and then we fixed some of the internal HVAC issues, or really the cooling issues that we had in some of our permanent spots. To know every room has, has an AC in there to at least cut down on some of that humidity. We did striping and ceiling of three different parking lots. Does not fix some of these problems, but it helps, helps prevent more problems from, from happening, and of course, relining a bunch of our parking also helps. We did a lot of preventative maintenance work. We, if you recall, we started, we had a maintenance tech join our team in February, and he is going around and taking a look at a lot of things that have been neglected in the past. With the help of DPW and our tree warden, we were, we were trimming some trees, and our maintenance tech is going up there and making sure that our drains are clean, and making sure that we're not growing things on a roof that is not designed to grow things on the roof. Cleaning vents, as simple as this is, I mean, there's, when you don't do this, this is what happens. So he's going through all of our vents and making sure that we're, we're cleaning, we're cleaning what we, what we need to be cleaned. Our auto shop in our high school is a very big project. This had turned into a big storage area, a big area where we really were just throwing our junk in there, and, and the robotics team approached Dr. Galston and basically said, we need more space, and, and everyone then teamed up together to make sure that there was space and organized it a little bit better. So now the robotics team has an area in there that they use, but we also have space for the maintenance team as well as all of the storage of supply products that the, the high school needs also. And not only we, did we resurface our floors, but we added our new logo to the gym, and we relocated it so when the camera shines on it, that the W is facing in the, in the right direction. With, with that being said, usually at this point of, of the year, I am closing down my capital projects and I'm starting to think about next summer's projects. But because we had a really good year, a lot of our projects that we, we used end-of-year money for. So that's what you see on here, these nine projects, our capital plan projects that I am just starting to plan now, that will happen in the next year. So this is not happening next summer, this is stuff that's gonna be happening over every break that we have in the next year. So it's almost like a whole, a second capital plan for me in planning-wise. So we've got a, we've got a little bit of work ahead of us, but it is gonna be fabulous. So again, that's some highlights of, of what we did in a, in a short two-month period, and I'll take any questions if anybody has any.
Questions? Comments? Yes. Yeah, Mark.
I just have a comment. I couldn't make the walkthrough, but I heard extremely good things from everybody, including staff here, about the work that was done, so thank you and your department for doing a good job for us this summer.
Other question, just one, the, the 800 work orders?
Mm-hmm.
Is that like cumulative during the year that you then, then tried to address? Or what's the time span for those?
June 15th to August 31st.
You dealt with 800 work orders?
Yes.
Or you, 425 were completed?
Right.
But you had 800 that, so I assume some of those were, were started earlier in the year, but you couldn't get to them until the summer?
Correct, and some of them are still ongoing, but they either entered our office, they were in my inbox, I had 800 in my inbox at some point in that, those two months.
Wow.
So I didn't get to the walkthrough, but I did get through the middle school through as a parent, and it looks great. I was really impressed with how beautiful it looks. Also, there were, I know the robotics room was an issue, so I'm really glad that that was, that was cleaned up and worked out for the high school robotics team, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, again, I echo the same thing, thank you for all the work and for all the, in people in your department.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Go back here a second, couple other action items. We have approval of gifts, we have a gift, kind of in-kind gift of backpacks, and then a pretty substantial gift, $3,000, is that correct?
Yes.
$3,000 from Elizabeth and Ryan Bolden for the Allison Donovan memorial donation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nice to have it, thank you. Disposition of surplus property, stacking chairs, and then a conference table, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nice to have it. And then we have minutes from the school committee meeting of August 27th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second. Any discussion, corrections on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nice to have it, thank you. Let's see, so we, capital projects we did, improvement strategy, building for the future, elementary schools, Mark?
I don't have a lot to add since our last meeting, other than the fact that tomorrow night, the town council will be voting on the loan order for the owner's project manager for the elementary schools. And I, we'll be taking up, hopefully, some additional cost estimating things on our meeting on September 18th, and we were gonna begin looking at some of the interiors of the schools.
So tomorrow's the, the OPM for the elementaries, no?
Yes.
The vote on the OPM.
We're, we're voting the funding on the OPM for the elementary schools. We did a first reading back in August, and we haven't met.
Okay, any, Dr. Galston from the high school?
Likewise, not much of an update since the last time we met, but just as a reminder, on September the 17th, we will be returning to the MSBA for the designer selection panel meeting to be part of interviews for three of the firms that were moved forward, and at the end of that meeting, there'll be a recommendation to the school building committee as to who will be our architect for the high school. So I'm very excited about that, and I'm sure we'll let everyone know pretty much right after that what the recommendation is.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, personnel, did you have anything to add beyond you?
No, I think I'm.
You mentioned the 33, you said?
Yeah. Yes, I just hired another person today, plus teacher.
Warrants, you can see those here in our packet, the warrants are listed, any questions? Okay. School committee chair, I, I just have one, I want to, to make an announcement of a recognition for one of our members, Eileen, Eileen Schubalzer, I think you are aware, is, is, this is her final term as a school committee member. We will have a December meeting to talk about that and to recognize her in all kinds of ways that she can look forward to.
I'm good.
But I, I did want to.
I'm a little ill today.
No, you, you can't be ill, you have to be here.
We'll schedule, we'll schedule a meeting every night until you can get here.
We'll, or we'll move it to wherever you are.
You could just go to, you could ask somebody, you know, your house.
But, so what I wanted, I just wanted to announce, because it's already, it's, it's been done, if you will, that from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, she's receiving a lifetime achievement award, and so I want her to announce that. They've, they will, I think, officially make that announcement at the annual meeting that they have in early November, but they've already notified her, and I, it certainly is well-earned and well-deserved. So again, we'll have more to say about that in December, but I just wanted to make a public announcement about that, and congratulations to Eileen. Superintendent?
Thank you. Hard to follow that. This has been an evening where we've celebrated many things in terms of our opening days and our summer work that we did with our staff. At this point in time, I just really want to, in, say a great thank you to all of our staff members and our teachers and our administration for welcoming back our 2,600-plus students to school. It's been a great week, Teresa and I had a chance to visit all of our schools on the opening day, and it's just, I, I feel a great sense of, of purpose in terms of what we're doing for our students in our classrooms, and I always am very thankful for the support that we receive from the entire community, from the town, from everybody in terms of trying to do what's best for Watertown students. It's not like this anywhere else, and I'm just very proud to be part of the system. I have coffee, I'm, I have the, I'll send out the schedule to all the families in terms of all the coffees, but the first coffee will be on September 23rd. I welcome anybody who would like to come and spend some quality time with me at 9:00 AM in the Phillips Administration Building on the third floor, and again, at 7:00 PM for anyone who would just like to share ideas, thoughts, concerns, and certainly I would be equally able to share what we're doing within our district. I go back to that idea of two-way communication, this is one of those methods, and I hope that more people will take advantage of that opportunity. But as always, I encourage people, if they have questions or concerns, you know, reach out to your principals, or reach out to me, but certainly we like to hear what's going on in terms of what people are thinking about our schools, so come to the coffee.
Okay. Any new business? Seeing none, a few announcements, the policy subcommittee is meeting in two days?
Thursday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
September 11th, what time?
Five o'clock.
Five, 5:00 PM?
The call is upstairs in the data lab, 3:00.
Five p.m. in the data lab. Okay. Anti-Bias Coalition is at meeting that evening?
Yes, at 7:00 p.m.
7:00 p.m. There's a CPAC meeting listed here also, September 12th, at 9:00, and is it twice? They meet twice? No?
The, same thing, morning and evening.
Okay.
To try to get as many people who would like to come to the CPAC meetings, it's such a great opportunity for parents, another way to give two-way communication for us.
Okay. Notice here that back-to-school night at the high school, school building committee meeting September 17th.
That's probably not going to be necessary, because that was dedicated to the MSBA, and.
Right.
We won't know.
Right.
What we need to do until, too late to post that meeting.
Okay, but we probably will meet on the 18th.
Yes.
And then there's the elementary back-to-school nights on the 19th, superintendent's coffee you just mentioned, middle school back tonight on September 26th, and then the next school committee meeting is October 7th in this chamber. Public forum? Who wants to speak? Nope? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Nice habit, thank you.